Okay, we're gonna call this meeting order. I'd like to welcome everybody. Montclair City Council members, welcome. And we'll try to make this easy for a lot of the folks, so get you out of here at a reasonable time. We'll begin with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll ask the city clerk to introduce those two individuals.
Tonight's invocation will be led by Reverend Maggie Burbank Yanoki, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be given by Mayor Potem Martinez.
Please stand.
Gathered in this space that is the center of community service, we invite the spirit of life to enliven and guide us with a fresh and clear vision of both the blessings that come with public service and also the hard work we are here to accomplish together. May we honor the ancestors of this land and those descendants yet to come with our integrity and our love for this place we know as home. May each and every individual in our city, no matter their social location, find warm welcome and deep belonging among us. May all of our actions bring us closer to a better way of life for all. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Mendez.
Here.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Rue. Mayor Potem Martinez. And Mayor Dutre.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this evening, we have three presentations. We'll start with the introduction of new and promoting police officers. Number two, we're going to recognize your military banner presentation awardees. And then finally, we're gonna honor the Moncler High School Cavaliers Boys Water Polo Team. Any excitement about that one? Gotta get a cheer?
Woo!
You guys can cheer. All right. So we're gonna come on down, and we'll let the chief start.
Good evening to all the members of city council, city staff, city manager star, and everyone in attendance. And we have a large crowd here tonight, so that's nice. It's my pleasure, once again, to introduce two new officers and a newly promoted police sergeant from within in the agency in front of this large crowd and in front of all of you. So without further ado, I'd like to call the first officer up, Officer Arad Tatarian. Officer Tatarian is a lateral officer for us. So he knew he wanted to become a police officer as a child because it was his calling in life. He started his career in law enforcement in 2020 when he sponsored himself through the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Academy, Class 220. He graduated as a squad leader and a top 10 overall in that class. Arad shared his law enforcement career-- I'm sorry. He started his law enforcement career in the city of Brawley, California, where he gained over three years of law enforcement experience and was promoted to corporal at that agency and also became a field training officer for that agency as well. Arad wanted to work for the Montclair Police Department because he heard there was a great sense of camaraderie amongst fellow officers and opportunity to advance in his career. He lives with his older brother and father, who both support his career choice and positively influence his life. Officer Tatarian, thank you for joining the Montclair family. Welcome aboard. Our second new officer, lateral police officer as well, I'd like to call up is to the front, is Officer Brandon Burns. Officer Burns previously worked for Los Angeles Police Department, aka LAPD, and was stationed in the valley at Foothill Police Station in Pacoima. He served there for a year and seven months, working patrol, before becoming an officer. Officer Burns owned a carpet and floor cleaning business for 13 years. In 2023, Officer Burns decided to pursue being a police officer because he wanted to try to change the public's perception of policing. Brandon was also inspired by his sister, who is currently in law enforcement. He believes that his previous experience as a business owner and as an officer at LAPD have granted him the ability to handle many situations and connect with people he'll be serving. He's excited to join Montclair PD and looks forward to learning the skills and knowledge that the senior officers will teach him to enhance his abilities. So with that, I give you Officer Brandon Burns. It's now my pleasure to call up our newly promoted police sergeant, Sergeant Anthony Del Rio. Sergeant Anthony Del Rio began his career with the Montclair Police Department back in 2016. He worked as a patrol officer, a field training officer as a special duty mate investigator, which is our major accident investigation team, a range master, firearms instructor, less lethal instructor as well. For the past three years, he was assigned to the inland regional narcotics enforcement team, also known as ERNET, where he assisted the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department with high-level narcotics investigations throughout the whole state, probably even beyond that. Prior to becoming a police officer, he attended Mount San Antonio College and graduated with an AA degree. In his free time, he enjoys fishing, tending to chickens that he has at home, and being with the family. He lives at home with his lovely wife and two children. And again, I thank Anthony Del Rio, Sergeant Del Rio, for taking on the challenges in the, we believe is, one of the most rewarding positions in the police department. Not only to mentor and assist new officers in line-level supervision, but also to pass that experience on to the community and provide a better service for it. So thank you. So with that, I give you Sergeant Del Rio. And that concludes my presentations for the evening. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Chief. And obviously, we have a lot of officers, and it's great to see that just about all the positions in the police department, as far as sworn, is filled.
Yes.
So thank you for your hard work and your esteemed hard work, and thanks for all the officers we have here this evening.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay. The next item we have is to conduct our four military banners presentation of Montclair veterans. And at this time, I'd like to invite our vice chairperson of the Community Activities Commission, Darlene Ferrer-Rowell, to come on up and to talk about our honorees.
Seventeen years ago, the Community Activities Commission began sponsoring a military street banner program to recognize Montclair residents who served in the armed forces. In 2024, a total of 31 military banners and two banners honoring all veterans were proudly displayed throughout the city of Montclair. Today, we would like to honor four individuals whose banners were displayed during their service and who have recently been honorably discharged. First, we would like to recognize Dan Patrick Benavides. Mr. Benavides served in the United States Marine Corps from November 2020 to November 2024 and held the rank of corporal. He was stationed at Camp Lejeune and Camp Cherry Point in North Carolina during his time of service. He held the position of combat marksmanship coach for two and a half years, where he instructed over 500 Marines and sailors how to accurately operate pistols and rifles. He received the National Defense Service Medal and the Global War on Terrorism Service Medal during his four years of service. Corporal Benavides has been a Montclair resident since 2010, attending Vernon Middle School and then Montclair High School, where he graduated in May of 2020. Since his honorable discharge, Mr. Benavides has been actively looking into becoming an auto body technician. Dan Patrick Benavides, on behalf of the city of Montclair, we would like to present you with your banner that was displayed on Central Avenue. We thank you for your service to our country. Congratulations. Next, we would like to recognize Alfred Daniel Lopez, who served in the United States Marine Corps from July 2018 to January 2024 and held the rank of corporal. He was stationed in Camp Pendleton, California, and then mobilized to the Marine Corps Recruit Depot in San Diego during the pandemic. He received the National Defense Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Armed Forces Service Medal, Armed Forces Reserve Medal, and a Certificate of Appreciation of Service. Mr. Lopez has been a resident of Montclair since 2022. Since his honorable discharge, Mr. Lopez has dedicated his career to being an armed security guard for a government building. He aspires to become a police officer and to serve his community in the future. The photo being displayed-- The photo being displayed is Corporal Lopez with his fiancee Stephanie Cisneros at the 246th Marine Corps Birthday Celebration. Alfred Daniel Lopez is not able to join us this evening, but his mother, Tracy Lopez, will be accepting his banner. On behalf of the city of Montclair, we would like to present you with Alfred's banner that was displayed on Monte Vista Avenue. We thank your son for his service to his country. We would like to recognize Mario Amado Monsabas, who served in the United States Marine Corps from November 2019 to November 2023 and held the rank of corporal. He was stationed in Camp Pendleton, California, and Camp Lejeune in North Carolina. During his time of service, he received the National Defense Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Marine Corps Good Conduct Medal, Meritorious Mass Recognition, and Marksmanship Badge Expert Qualification Badge II. Corporal Monsabas has been a resident of Montclair since 2020. Toward the end of his service, he was enrolled in a skills bridged course for pipe trade. Since his honorable discharge, he has worked for the Southern California Pipe Trades Administrative Corporation in Los Angeles. Mario Monsabas, on behalf of the city of Montclair, we would like to present you with this banner that was displayed on Monte Vista Avenue. We thank you for your service to our country. Congratulations.
One more. We go to one more. I'm gonna ask my wife, the first lady of Montclair, and also a retired lieutenant colonel of the United States Army, did you please join me for the next honoree?
We would like to recognize Christopher Tanner, third-generation veteran, who served in the United States Army from September 2012 to August 2024 and held the rank of Staff Sergeant. During his impressive 10-plus years of service, Staff Sergeant Tanner was stationed in Louisiana and Georgia and was also deployed to the countries of Colombia and Honduras. As a medic, he was also detailed to provide COVID-19 vaccines in Wisconsin. Some of his accomplishments during his military service include graduating from air assault school, and while he was deployed in Colombia, he had the honor to meet their president. Staff Sergeant Tanner has been a resident of Montclair since the age of 10, attending Howard Elementary School, followed by Ontario Christian School in Ontario, where he graduated in 2009. Since his honorable discharge, Mr. Tanner and his family have moved to Texas, where he works in the field of information technology while pursuing a master's degree in cybersecurity. Christopher Tanner is not able to join us this evening, but his mother, wife of our mayor and a veteran herself, Lieutenant Colonel Andrew Dutre, will be accepting the banner-- his military banner. On behalf of the city of Montclair, we would like to present you with his banner, which was displayed on Central Avenue. We thank you both, you and your son, for your service to our great nation.
Much. I do remember the day that Christopher-- his first day in the Army, or first day he went to LA, that's called a mobilization. Arturo knows it better. Actually, Arturo, who's one of our commissioners, he's the one that coached my son, our son, as he entered the Army as a combat medic. But I do remember that first day, and what an experience, especially when you go to boot camp and the graduation of boot camp, and you go as a parent there, and you just see a person that just matures over that two or three months. I want to say, behalf of the city of Montclair, we appreciate all of our veterans who are here and all the ones who can't be here and their families for the sacrifice you have provided for our great country. Thank you. Okay, we have one more presentation, I promise. And tonight, we're gonna recognize the Moncler High School Men's Water Polo Team. Why we recognize them? Because they went to the CIF Finals, Division VI, last November. And I understand-- I can't remember. I think there's three rounds before you enter the finals. And they played the San Bernardino High School. How I knew about this is because I went to a meeting in San Bernardino, and one of the county's supervisors, Joe Baca, told me, "Hey, did you know that San Bernardino and Montclair play each other in the CIF Finals?" And I said, "I did not know that." So, but I do know that now. Nevertheless, I understand the game was close. And at halftime, it was 5-3 at halftime. And then Montclair being behind. And then, from my understanding, is Montclair was able to score a couple times. And then, I believe-- And I believe it was tied 7-7. And there was five minutes and 15 minutes left, and Samy did score. And then Montclair countered 90 seconds later with a goal. By Marco, it was Marco. Marco here? Marco tied that game. And then, with three minutes left, Samy did score. And then, I understand, after that, Montclair made four chances, opportunity to score. Unfortunately, they were not able to tie the game. But what the newspaper I have here from the LA Times-- or Samy-- excuse me, Samy the Sun, said, "Montclair had a historic season. This was the program's first trip to a section final." How exciting is that? Coach Valdez here? Coach Valdez here? Are you the coach? Come on down. And I-- Come on down, coach. Recognize before I go, Principal Chow is here. Chow, excuse me. He's here from Moncler High School. Let's recognize the principal. And there's another quote here in the Samy the Sun. It said, "When I-- this is from the coach-- "When I started coaching here three years ago, we only had seven players. We come from an area where a lot of people don't even have-- don't know you know how to swim. So, we went from seven players three years ago to runner-up to CIF Finals." How exciting is that again? Is that exciting? So I'm gonna give you a plaque, coach. And this is yours. Put that on the wall. Well, thank you. If you don't mind staying right here, coach. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna ask each of the players to come up, and I'm gonna ask Mayor Potem Martinez to do the introductions.
All right. Hello? Is this on? Okay. All right. Congratulations to Taven Banks. Marco Banuelos. Victor Gallardo. Joshua Gomez. Noah Guzman. Angel Hernandez. And I've been told that Fon Coco and Nathan Mendoza are not here today. But congratulations to the both of them. Manuel Mota. Dominic Pedraza. Liz Pedraza. Sebastian Plitez. Dylan Ramirez is not here today. Congratulations, Dylan. Joel Sossido. And Gianni Vivanco.
Okay, so-- As we say-- what do we say at Moncler High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Moncler High School. I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them. We say, "Go Cavs," right? Go Cavs! All right. As we say, what do we say at Montclair High School? What do we say? There's three of us here who graduated from Montclair High School, I'm being one of them.[880.87]
And met some stipulations and requirements. Can staff please sit down with her and meet with her further, either from PD or preferably? Because I think there's some maybe misunderstandings or some concerns that haven't been assuaged. That need to be addressed, please.
Yes, I think that the chief, Jason Reed, just acknowledged that he would do that.
Appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is George Sanchez.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jorge Sanchez. I'm a resident of Montclair. I've been a resident for about 15 years. I'm originally from Los Angeles and I moved for the better part for getting my kids away from the violence and gangs over there. And to Montclair, I moved here to Montclair to provide a safe haven for me and my family. And we experienced the safety for most of the time that we've been in Montclair. However, it makes me sad now that I realized that I was wrong about not being any gangster in Montclair. The gangs here in Montclair are trained, heavily armed, and sworn in with a badge. I have two experiences recently that I would like to talk to you about today. And I'll start with the first one. In July of 2024, I was pulled over because I had not put on my registration on my car, my sticker. And the reason I believe I was racially profiled is the officer, when he approached me, he spoke to me in Spanish. And the reason I felt threatened, and at the time I asked for a supervisor, the way he approached me and the way he had his, he was holding his, put his hand in his gun, I was a little apprehensive and I felt threatening. Now, when I called for a supervisor and asked him to give me a supervisor, I was threatened with detainment if the supervisor arrived. At this time, the second officer that was present asked me to speak with me. And I say, sure, you know, sure, you come with me very respectful. I really appreciate that. And he says, I'm having a little issue here with the first officer. And she said, well, I'll have him leave and go to the patrol car. Second officer approached me with respect and I did not feel threatened or I wasn't treated like a criminal. And she asked me to see my driver's license. I was released shortly afterwards by that officer. And I saw the difference in the way I was treated after this incident. I tried to voice my concern to a watch commander at the time over the phone. And I was told that the watch commander by the name of Godoy would return my call. Never received the call. As for the second incident, this happened this month in front of my house. I was already parking in front of my house. Officer pulled up same way, walking in, holding his gun in a threatening way. I felt, I felt fear. Claiming, he was claiming that I did not stop at a stop sign. He actually followed me home. I was already home when I was parking in front of my home. And he said, he approached me and like I said, with his hand in his gun, standing in a very threatening way. Again, I immediately asked for a supervisor. At this moment, my family saw that an officer was with me through a ring device. My wife and daughter came out to record for my safety. And the officer requested more units to this position. Despite being told that our supervisor would show up, never did. No supervisor did show up. And instead, a group of officers arrived at my home, stared down my wife and my daughter from the curb. At this point in time, I was worried for the safety of my wife and daughter and decided to simply stop waiting for the supervisor to ensure that me and my family would come out of this alive. Given that I never received a call back from my first incident, I gave up all hope of voicing my concern directly to the Montclair Police Department. To summarize my concern, these two experiences have shown me that there is no accountability with the Montclair Police Department and that anyone who may interact with an officer is at the mercy of the officer. I was apprehensive writing this letter and sharing it with you all tonight for fear of retaliation or harm. And my only goal here is to have my concern heard, acknowledged, and for changes to be made in the behavior of officers that patrol the city of Montclair. Thank you for hearing me.
No problem, thank you. And City Manager Starr, I don't know if you can answer my question, but if a citizen has a complaint about an employee or in this case, the police department, is there a process they can file a complaint, a rent complaint?
Yes, they would file a complaint through the city clerk's office and then it would be handled and processed by the city attorney.
Okay. And I assume the police department has a, Jason, there's also an opportunity to file a complaint at the police department if there's an issue with an employee? Okay. Thank you. So sir, if you have an issue, if you want to file a complaint with the police department or the city clerk's office, you're welcome to do so if you feel as though that the employee has done something to harm you.
Sir, I've tried unsuccessfully and I just get patronized. I have directly gone to the station. I am asked to wait at the lobby for an officer to come out.
Okay, you can also file one with the city clerk's office. Okay, thank you. All right.
All right, our next speaker is Mutika Ananda.
Hello.
Hello, how you doing?
Doing very well. Thank you, Mayor Dootry. It's very nice to see the city council. Mayor Potem Martinez, very nice to see you again. Councilmember Mendez, Councilmember Lopez, and Councilmember Bilrou, very nice to see you again. Today I come presenting a global peace conclave that we're, we're getting, embarking on from the Nityanandeshwari Hindu Temple, Kailasa, Los Angeles. And we are part of Kumbh Mela, which is the largest Hindu gathering that is currently happening in India. About, they're expecting almost 400 million people to visit India for the spiritual journey over 45 days. It started on the 13th of January, goes on till the end of February. And the context there is a pilgrimage that all Hindus make towards the Ganges River. And there is a celebration that happens and a grand procession. And people go and take a dip in the Ganges to be purified. So this is what happens there. And we have been given the express approval to have a similar event here. Not 400 million, but we're working towards having, you know, there'll be a few hundred people coming, visiting, and taking part in celebrations that are very similar that happen in India. And this time, what we're, we're looking to do, and this is the fifth time that we are hosting it outside of India. The, the board or the organization that oversees the entire Kumbh Mela has given us the express approval to host this event outside of India in an attempt to bring people of all communities and backgrounds together. We truly stand, you know, as a, as a representative for Hindus. And we also, you know, welcome, we have invited indigenous community members, interfaith members, Hindu temples, and Indian organizations that are going to come together to celebrate this as a means for coming together in a space of oneness and showing how the world can be a place filled with harmonious coexistence. And through the Hindu rituals and the Hindu traditions, we show how the purpose of a human's life, which is to lead to liberation and enlightenment, is achieved by the various processes and the culture and the traditions that are followed. And we wanted to invite the city of Montclair, mayor and the council members to please visit and be part of this event where many people from across the curb, and in fact, we have representatives from Kailasa, from several countries who have gathered and who are preparing for this event. And we'll be having our rituals. We will be having special talks by interfaith leaders and several dignitaries who'll be coming to the temple. And we wanted to personally come and invite the city to be a part of it. Our initiatives that we take are always meant to contribute to the city of Montclair and to the world. Montclair has been home to the temple since 2007, and we're so proud to be part of Montclair. And our way of, you know, contributing is to ensure that we are contributing to the economic progress, to bring more people to Montclair, to establish various businesses or to be part of the business community, religious and the social community out here. And we take this opportunity to invite all of you. The Hindu Parliament and the Sanatana Hindu Sangha, which is a gathering and a conglomeration of several organizations, is coming together to host this event. And it gives me great pleasure to present a brochure and documentation and the invite to this event to Mayor Dootry and to the council members. The event is going to happen on February 2nd. It is Sunday. And, you know, we're looking to have a beautiful gathering happen at the temple.
Great, well, thank you very much. If you want to give the information to Mr. Diaz here, and thank you for the invitation to the event and the education on this significant Hindu activity.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for this opportunity and we look forward to doing much more in the city of Montclair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, and I have one more from Nick Wilson. And they would like to speak on the Southern California AQMD item that is later on the agenda.
Nick Wilson, okay. I believe you're the Nick Wilson ran for state assembly?
Yes, that's me.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well. And yeah, so my name is Nick Wilson and like I'm a husband, father. I'm a retired police officer and I'm going to just tell you about what my observations were, what my concerns are. And I, before I begin, I absolutely respect that most of us in this room have differing political views with varying degrees, but this is very important. And so I felt that I wanted to come speak on this when I heard that you guys were going to be bringing this as a resolution. So I'm very concerned about AQMD's agenda that will adversely impact all residents and small businesses. Right now, California regulators are pushing a ban on natural gas water heaters that will apply to Southern California, specifically Los Angeles, San Bernardino, Riverside, and Orange Counties. This is a test case. If it succeeds, it will spread statewide. And what does this mean? It will be illegal to buy or sell natural gas water heaters. And the cost to replace a single unit is estimated for residents between $6,000 and $20,000. It's going to be a crushing blow to homeowners, apartment owners. Small businesses that rely on larger equipment like dry cleaners will face costs between $300,000 and $800,000. Every industry, resident, business owner will be impacted, raising costs for everyone. Residents of Montclair and the people of California cannot afford this, nor should we continue to financially strain and burden struggling Californians already facing extreme hardships due to the outrageous cost of living and inflation, which is devastating Californians. It's important to note that the policies are part of a much broader environmental plan for California that impacts every manner in which we live, do business, and travel. This is another excuse to fine and tax businesses and homeowners into submission for noncompliance for extreme policies that will continue to bankrupt California homeowners and businesses. Moreover, this will impact school districts because school districts will not be reimbursed from the state because this is not a state law, it's a local rule. The final decision is in May. The local government Small Business Advisory Group, which is supposed to advocate for small businesses, has essentially been shut down and silenced by bureaucrats. I went to the recent meeting and was in shock at what I saw because I think we all want transparency. And the group of staffers that are there were doing everything that they could to silence transparency and people that were speaking out against this. That's not something I think any of us want as we all advocate for transparency. The bigger picture that I'm talking about is regarding Blueprint 2.0. This is one of Gavin Newsom's agendas that includes, on top of everything else, something called VMTs, vehicle miles traveled tax. It's a pay-per-mile tax designed to restrict your freedom of movement. This is about control, not climate. Californians are being used as guinea pigs for extreme policies that will devastate businesses, raise living costs, and limit personal freedom. If these extreme environmental policies are not stopped, every Californian will face financial hardship and small businesses will bear the brunt of the consequences. From my research, and I was just made aware of this most recently, which is why I'm here speaking to you. AQMD Board is one of the driving forces behind California's environmental policies and they created the Local Government Small Business Advisory Group to provide recommendations on behalf of the public and external stakeholders. However, these recommendations are largely ignored. At their last meeting, which I attended, their staff derailed the committee's intent to go on the record to oppose the rules. Staff has repeatedly interfered with the committee's function and tries to dictate to the committee instead of accepting input from the committee or the public. This is extremely concerning. It doesn't stop there. California's broader environmental agenda includes, the next wave of this is not going to stop in natural gas heaters. This is, they're intending on banning gas-powered vehicles, stoves, barbecues, and even continuing the agenda of taxing every mile that you drive. This is about removing local control, which is in opposition of every basic foundational principle of government, as each of you know. Staffers are going out of their way, and I was in shock to see, to ensure that the public is not adequately notified or informed.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Nick. Five minutes is up, sorry about that. No problem, thank you.
I have no more speaker cards.
All right, we'll go on to the consent calendar of the agenda as I normally do for our new council member. I'll probably start with my right, see any members in the right have anything they want to pull.
Item C, like Charlie number three.
C3, okay. I have, I have C3 on my right, how about my left? Anybody want to pull some on my left?
Yeah, C4 and D1.
C4 and D1, okay. All right, we'll start with item C3 then.
Yeah, real quick question, let me get to my tab here. For the public's benefit, this is an item before us that would have us enter into an agreement with the Ontario Montclair School District for the lease of a field at Vernon Middle School for purposes of providing the field to play for Golden Girls softball league. In the staff report, I'm confused because the field, I was under the impression was part of Buena Vista's jurisdiction, not Vernon's. It is Vernon? Okay, because the next question is regarding the slurry and the fill for the concrete or the portion of, I'm assuming it's the parking lot we're going to do that for?
Yes, this is a common element of these agreements is that we do maintenance of their parking fields.
The reason why I'm asking is if you're on the field and you picture yourself on the field, the Buena Vista parking lot is used much more regularly by those attending games and practices for Golden Girls. And the Vernon parking lot is on Vernon Avenue. So I'm not, would we do the slurry at the Buena Vista site or are we going to actually do the parking lot on Vernon Avenue where the middle school is?
It's Buena Vista.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know. No, I, okay, that's where I was confused because I'm like, wait a minute, we're on Buena Vista's parking lot, that makes sense. I envisioned it being clear on the other side, but thank you for the clarification. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to the next item, which is C4.
All right. Just, I had a quick question regarding, I was going through this agenda item and under background in the sentence that talks about safe multi-use greenway paths that will provide new connections between neighborhoods, parks, and schools. And I'm just wondering how we plan to try to guarantee that these areas will be safe, the pathways. I mean, I haven't seen anything on it yet and I'm just, was wondering if there's some way how we're going to guarantee safety along these, these walkways and along the San Antonio Channel. That was my only question that I had.
Well, Mr. Radia might want to respond to the question, but I will say that the city plans on installing more than adequate lighting along the length of the trail. Cameras will be monitoring the trails. The trails will be shut in the evening and night hours so that there isn't loitering overnight along the trail. And beyond that, we anticipate and expect that the trail will generate a lot of interest in the community and it will have a regular entourage of pedestrians and bicyclists using it, which in and of itself would create a safe environment because people present tends to discourage any type of unacceptable behavior as a general rule.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, city council members. I just want to add to that, that fencing along the channel entrances, just like we currently have right now for the access road to the flood control channel, which is locked. So we would do the same thing. So it would be closed for, I don't know the hours yet, we haven't completed a segment yet. But for example, along Sunset Boulevard, we will have gates and fencing throughout the entire area.
So then these gates will be open and closed at certain times. Before they're closed, will somebody drive these things to make sure somebody's not in there and get locked in or are there anything? I just didn't, I just find it hard to believe that we can really guarantee safety, you know, through these areas.
Well, we do our best to secure a site, but there's always...
No, I know, and believe me, I would love to see, you know, this pathway.
We'll have security cameras, we'll have lighting. So it'll be similar to the transcenter, right? We close and open gates there as well.
Keep in mind that it's a park, so like every other park in the city, they close at a certain time of day. Some of them close at dusk, some close at 10 o'clock at night. This will be the same thing. Parks are open, they're not all fenced off, and so we have to anticipate that the residents or users of these facilities will respect those rules. If they don't, the police officer, the police department will be providing patrol as necessary if we identify that there are problems along a particular section of the trail, just like we currently do with parks. And we depend on residents to also notify us when the rules are being violated.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have a comment on this item?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead. Mr. City Manager, you kind of were going to touch on the question I was going to ask. Because unless there's a gate from point A to point Z of the whole trail and it's going to be gated, we're not going to be able to ensure that people are not going to access certain points of it that do not have these enclosures and these gates open and whatnot. Our parks do actually indeed get utilized for inappropriate purposes after hours. Take Saratoga Park, for example. I know that's far from the trail site, but use that as an example. I believe MacArthur Park up in the north gets locked at night, so that's an exception. But if all parks were like MacArthur, we wouldn't have the problem. But those that are still, even though the gates around the Diamonds and the center stand of Saratoga are secure, the fields aren't. And as it gets dark, there's shady activity that happens. I have residents that call me with respect to, I believe Sunset Park along Amherst and whatnot, south of Orchard, that they get, they find needles and items of sexual content strewn out across the park the morning, the next morning. So I, I've never been totally sold on the trail. I do think it's going to be problematic. And other than maybe the four or five individuals that have been in favor of this and they're, have the right to do so from the very beginning, I have yet to have, on the four years on this council, a resident come up to me and say, I want this trail, I intend to use it. I think it's going to be underutilized, but that's my opinion. So anyhow.
Well, if I may respond to your statements, obviously, we can't guarantee the security of every park in the community. Going forward, number of the modifications that we are making to the park, it is our intent, and unfortunately, we find ourselves in this position that many of the parks will in fact be closed off at certain times of day. So for example, Sunset Park, which is currently under construction, has always been an open park, but the ultimate design for that park will require the installation of fencing at both the north and south ends to close off that park at certain times of the day or in the evening effectively. We will also be looking at that for Saratoga Park. I unfortunately have to agree that reality dictates that that is something that we have to look at and consider. Many of the segments of the San Antonio Creek Trail will be closed off. There will be sections that will be difficult to do that with simply because of the way that the trail would be designed and the certain points along the trail will just have open access. Not much we can do, but the bulk of the trail will be secured if it's contiguous to backyard properties that are already fenced off, which is considerable length of the trail, as well as the channel itself on the east or west side, depending on which side of the trail we're talking about as it travels from north to south through Montclair. So there will be open sections, but the bulk of the San Antonio Creek Trail will be closed off at night. But even having said that, the Reader Ranch Park, which is currently under construction, as well as Saratoga Park, which is currently under construction, both of these parks are fenced off and both of these parks are repeatedly invaded by individuals who climb over the fences on the weekends or in the evenings to take advantage of the opportunities that these parks provide to them, despite the fact that we try to secure them. So we're never going to be able to secure anything. Businesses can't even be secured with their closed doors and, and security systems. So parks are certainly not going to be amenable to a high level of security. I agree with you on that.
Okay. I would solicit to, to hire a design contractor, consultant, come on board to design this portion of the trail. And obviously, part of that design includes putting in security measures to essentially keep it as safe as possible. And I, I'm a firm believer that here in Montclair, the people of Montclair deserve parks, you know? We can not building parks and there's no parks to go to in Montclair, or we can have parks in Montclair, nice parks, not just parks, but nice parks and trails and everything else. And I actually believe that Montclair residents will use it. Yes, we're going to have those other folks that are not going to treat the, not to treat the facilities very well, and we will deal with it as we go. But I believe the people of Montclair, especially our children in Montclair, deserve to have good parks. So I'm going to go on to the next item, which I believe is item D1. And, go ahead.
All right, under D1, just understanding the request for forming the Community Facilities District or CFD up in the north Montclair downtown specific plan area. Just a couple of questions. Obviously, this was something that I'm assuming was always hoping that we would create a CFD at this location. And I understand reading this that, you know, we need two-thirds vote to approve this from the actual residents that live there. So just want to make sure that we have enough information as council members to be able to convince the residents there, if we talk to them, you know, that, you know, what would, why we think it's a good idea. Understanding also that, you know, the maintenance, you know, and the monies that we raise for the CFDs will go to maintenance and lighting and parks and parkways, police protection services, fire protection. And then I know that all the streets that are there, are those streets, I don't remember, but are those streets private or public? That's, I guess, Station Avenue, Birch Street, were those public or private?
Well, as it would relate to the CFD maintenance, they would be public streets. If they were private streets, then the property owner would be responsible for all maintenance of those streets. So when the CFD is tied to a maintenance issue, it would be public related. As far as the, the vote, the general rule is that the CFDs are adopted before properties become available for lease, so there aren't tenants in the properties and it is only the property owner that votes. So you're only having one party vote on the CFD and the property owner is a partner in, with the city in relation to the CFD. So that has generally, well, not generally, it has not been an issue to this point in time because it usually is a single vote by the property owner.
Yeah. Okay, and then I guess showing the maximum special tax of tax A and tax B per square foot of each building. So it sounds to me approximately, I would assume that each property is going to have to pay about $1,300 a year in additional CFD taxes.
Okay, so there's a formulaic process for this and it is, it is based on a number of factors. So it is paid by the residents and it's attached to their resident. And again, because it's a formulaic process... And again, because it's a formulaic process, it's tied to square footage and other elements, so it would be very, a varied rate based on the size of your unit primarily.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Just trying to understand more about CFDs. Thank you.
All right, Councilor Roux.
Mr. Mayor, if you would, I could further explain a little bit. This is Mikey Fuentes.
Economic Development Agency Director, Mikey Fuentes.
Good evening. So just to answer, Councilmember Xavier on this right now, sorry, Xavier Mendez. The calculations are based off of the square footage of each of the buildings. So under the current tax structure, we, the city would be raising about $68,000 to cover any maintenance of the public right of ways within the development project. So that would go towards street sweeping, tree twimming, graffiti abatement, street signage, water expenses, trash removal, anything related to the maintenance of the park that would be there, as well as a special tax B that would be getting for public safety costs, vehicle emergency apparatus. So the current portion for the maintenance cost would be roughly $68,000 annually, and the public safety cost would be roughly $90,000 annually, for a total of just shy of $160,000, which would be levied each year onto the property. There is a mechanism to allow the cost to escalate at a minimum of 2% each year and a maximum of 6% of the CPI. So that would kind of give you an idea of the calculation amount going forward for the property.
Oh, I do also want to note that the funds are allocated in separate funds within the Finance Department so that they are only available for these specific purposes. They don't go into the general fund, and they're not used for general government purposes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, and just to add to City Manager Starr, his comment, the City Council back in December received a report that stated what were all the amounts of funds being collected from the two current CFDs would be going. So there would be an additional report for this year showing the third CFD. So we currently have a CFD that covers Arrow Station, as well as a separate CFD that covers both the Paseos and Alexand Kendry, and this would be the third CFD into the city.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Roux.
Yes, thank you. In regard to the issue of CFDs generally, I oppose them for a very simple reason. They add to the cost of housing. We're in a very expensive market, not just in California, right here in this region. And every time you add something to the cost of that housing, you're excluding somebody. We have a huge shelter problem. It's been brought up recently because of the fires. About two years ago, I attended a conference at UCLA in my professional life, and one of the speakers made a very good point. He said that when you put in these CFDs and other type of fees, taxes on housing, they're essentially used as a, his term, barrier to entry. It's a way of excluding people. If you can't afford this, please move on somewhere else. So I generally oppose these. I don't, you know, they have a petition before us tonight, you know, that's their business, but I would generally oppose them, and I don't think I would move to any place that put a whole bunch of fees on me simply for living in the complex. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lopez.
My questions were addressed and answered. I just would like to request that, I don't recall off the top of my head receiving that CFD report from the two existing, the report on the two existing CFDs. If I can get that copy sent to me, please, I'd like to have that again. Thank you.
I believe you said they were coming, that they weren't available.
Oh, I thought they were the one on two, okay.
Well, thank you very much. And I think CFDs are important because somehow we have to pay for public services, police, fire, public works, and it goes on and on and on. I know there's a big mandate from the state to build housing, which is obviously something this city is doing, but at the same time, we have to be able to sustain the services that we provide in the city of Montclair. And unfortunately, that requires revenue coming into the city of Montclair to do that. Just about any development that's happening in California now, there is some type of a CFD or maintenance fee district or some other things. You know, property taxes alone, especially over a number of years because of Prop 13, doesn't pay for the services long-term. So unfortunately, these are the things that we have to do as cities to be able to survive. So I think we hit all the consent calendar items. And so, do I have a motion for the consent calendar? Can I get a motion? Xavier, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
For approval of the consent calendar? Okay, can I get a second? Is there a second?
One second.
Second by Councilmember Martinez. And with that, we will vote. Okay, it's adopted 5-0, and we will go on to communication. And the city attorney, I don't know if you have anything else, like the city attorney?
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. City manager?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have about eight items, so I appreciate, I apologize, it's going to be a little long here, but the first item is to announce there's a vacancy on the planning commission, one position. The applicants must be residents of Montclair. The term of this position expires June 30th, 2027, and the application period is going to be, is currently open now and will be open until February 9th of this year. And you can submit applications to the Montclair City Hall. The second item is regarding the resolution, a letter of the proposed South Coast Air Quality Management District Rules 1111 and 1121. So the reason why this is in front of you under the mayor's item is I have been approached by several people to sign a letter opposing the proposed rule changes as A, as AQMD will be considering. And there's a copy of a draft letter in your pack along with some resolutions, too. As noted earlier, the proposed amended rules adopted will require future gas, water, heaters, and furnaces replacements to be electric and ban basically any type of gas used at the, the new rule changes are part of the AQMD's goal to comply with federal air emission reduction regulations. Again, this is federal air emissions, this is not state, it's coming down from the federal government. Obviously, there's, there's a little change in the federal government took place yesterday, and so some of this may change under the new administration, but currently, this is what the AQMD board is considering. There is a much concern at the possible additional cost for, to existing single-family, multifamily businesses to replace, including modifying their electrical system to accommodate such non-gas appliances. And of course, I'm concerned here in Montclair of the negative impact that Montclair residents and businesses will have with escalating cost. And I just want to state that obviously, air quality is important, the emissions and the health of residents, and I think also in climate control, climate change impacts of the emissions is a concern of society. But I also believe that such rule changes and could be dramatic on residents, businesses. I'm not convinced it's quite there yet. I would, I would hope, I would propose the AQMD do a pilot project first and see how this works to make sure that the cost, especially towards residents and businesses, small businesses, is not or is equal to what will be today if you were just replaced a gas appliance. So the AQMD board was, was to consider these, these changes, these rule changes last year, late last year, but they have now delayed it to their April meeting, if I understand. There is a policy committee called the Stationary Policy Committee, and they'll be reviewing these rules, I understand, next month. And then early this month, the SBCTA, SBC COG, which I serve on, represent in Montclair, voted to oppose the two rule changes, which I was part of the opposition of the rule changes. And I know currently several cities, including Ontario and Chino, have taken similar positions. So tonight, I'm asking the city council, he can either authorize me to sign a letter, and then we can immediately submit it to the AQMD, or authorize staff to place this man on a future meeting for further consideration. And I would recommend that we just go ahead and get the letter signed and get it out as soon as possible.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion.
So, Councilmember Roux, Councilmember Lopez, you have any comments?
Yeah, I do, and I want to piggyback on what you said. What really needs to be conveyed is this. This is going to pose, this rule change, basically, there will be no grandfathering in of you being able to replace your water heater. So if it breaks or exceeds the timeframe in which it needs to be replaced, you're going to be forced to replace this and likely put in perhaps an electric version of a heater of some kind, which of course, current housing, a lot of housing, do not have the plumbing, if you will, for lack of a better term, to accommodate the electric or the alternative form of energy heater to heat your home. What folks do not take into account is, for something like us and for you residents of Montclair, according to census data that was released in 2022, the median household income for our city is now $72,789. It went up about .056 percent.
For a family of four.
Sorry?
For a family of four.
For a family of four, yes, that's a household of four. $72,789. The, the low-end cost estimate to meet this requirement, to get your home hooked up and so you can be in compliance, the low-end cost is $6,000. So for an average family in this town who's making $72,000, let's say $73,000 because it's closer to $73,000, you're asking them to expend $6,000. That's the equivalent of their complete one month's worth of salary just to have another hookup, when the current existing hookup already works and is fine. The mayor said this. This is a federal regulation that is coming down from the feds. However, as he alluded yesterday, there was a change in, change in the administration. There perhaps will be some different changes on, or views and regulations on climate and what would happen with respect to the burden placed on families throughout the country. So I am in favor of us, I don't care if we sign the letter or we adopt a formal resolution, either way, I'd be in favor of it. We would be joining Chino and I believe Ontario. One other thing, it doesn't just affect residents, this affects businesses, and it's taken to account dry cleaners. They need boilers. They use a lot more heavy equipment, industrial equipment for their business. The estimated cost, the low end, the low end cost for them to be in compliance is $300,000. How in the hell is this not going to kill them? This is going to kill businesses. It's going to break the backs of an already stretched working family, particularly in this state, and for us residents in Montclair. So we need to do this. And I would actually ask that residents start calling the AQMD and send in letters of opposition, phone them, I mean flood their lines, not just say no, say hell no. We've been taxed enough already, and this is just one more regulation and stipulation that doesn't need to happen. I, I would say, though, if I'm not mistaken, some of the similar objectives, not, not this rule change, but the objective to this climate issue was passed in that Climate Action Plan we adopted as a city, at least three members did. And that's part of the reason why I voted no, because it's, it's the burden on taxpayers, hardworking families, that does not take that into account. And here's proof of it. And I'm thankful, I'm thankful we are actually taking the correct and right position on this. Thank you.
Okay. And Councilman, Mayor Pullton Martinez?
I have no problem agendizing an item for discussion, but I do need time to digest the proposed rules, so.
That's fine, understood. Councilmember Roux, I believe you made a motion?
Yes, I did, and I would like to make a comment before I, you know, ask for a second. Councilman Lopez is right. I live in a home that is 1,550 square feet, single-story, built in 1964. In looking at this, I had somebody come out because I had to have something electrical work done. I asked them what it would be for panel upgrade and all the wiring in the house, because you have to rewire. He told me it would be a minimum of $15,000. I don't have $15,000 sitting around. I want you to think about what a senior citizen would do, who's on a fixed income and now cannot get a gas water heater, or a gas stove, or a gas oven, or a gas dryer. They may not be able to afford to upgrade anything, so they're supposed to do without. There are other technologies out there in the future that may take hold. Hydrogen, the gas company has a beautiful hydrogen house, I've toured it three or four times now. I would encourage anybody up here to go and see it. It is the energy of the future. Simple water goes in, one molecule of oxygen is taken out, it's put into the air, it's medical-grade oxygen, another molecule, it's turned into hydrogen, and it's medical-grade hydrogen that heats and cools and does everything in the house. But I'm worried about people who can't afford this. A home in Montclair, a family of four, needs, with a median income of $140,000, cannot buy the median-priced home. So it would take two of the incomes he's talking about, so two families, in order to even get close to buying the median-priced home. Now we're going to add more of a burden on this. I am completely opposed to what they're doing.
Okay.
So I, I've made a motion, Mr. Mayor, for you to sign a letter.
Okay.
If there's a second.
Second.
So the letter is draft, the draft, that's in front of us. Okay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, got a motion, first and second, let's vote. All right, that's, motion is four to one. All right, so we will now continue on with my comments. I'm going to skip assignments for a second. Midyear budget, we talked about staff sending an email out about having midyear budget on February 25th, but I believe one member is not available on that date. So we're going to move it to Monday, the, the same day we have a meeting, Monday, March...
March 3rd.
March 3rd. We'll meet at March, we'll do a March 3rd midyear budget review, and we'll just start it at 5:45, like a workshop. Or if you want to, we can go to 5:30, if everybody's okay with 5:30. Does 5:30 work for everybody?
Yeah.
Gives a little more time? Okay, March 3rd at 5:30, will be a midyear budget review prior to the council meeting. I just want to make some comments real fast. I just want to recognize, obviously, all the Eden and Palestine fire victims, very sad situation that they're going through. Want to recognize the firefighters, law enforcement, to, one other way to, to try to protect those communities. And I also want to appreciate our staff here, police, fire, public works. Obviously, we had some wins here yesterday, pretty strong wins yesterday in Montclair for being proactive and with dealing with that. I also want to be able to recognize, I know PD had a, an incident last week. I know that Public Works is repairing the shark vandalism that took place, I believe, two weekends ago. And I appreciate also code enforcement handling a number of resident complaints I received during the holidays. And then also yesterday, just remember, it was Martin Luther King Birthday, just want to recognize that day as well. So now we will go down to the council committee assignments, and there was something in your packet, and there was one error in the packet, so you will find a second one on the dais to correct that one error we saw, the error related to the leak of California City State. And so that was the one change that took place. And obviously, there is some openings on the, some of the slots due to change on the council. So we'll begin with city council committees. I made some changes here, I recommended some changes. We'll start with, well, Public Works, Personnel, and Real Estate, I like to start with. Obviously, there is openings on the first two. What I'd like to do is appoint myself to Public Works along with Councilmember Martinez in Personnel, Councilmember Roux, and Councilmember Martinez on Personnel, and I'm going to remove myself from Real Estate, and I'd like to see if Councilmember Mendez would like to be on Real Estate and actually change that name from Real Estate to Economic Development. I'll serve those three. Then Code Enforcement, Public Safety, I think Councilmember Mendez serve on that one. And then the rest of it, no changes. And I'm not sure why we have the Tri-City Gold Line. Obviously, both Councilmember Roux and myself serve in different capacities on the joint JPA and also on the Gold Line Authority Board. So I'm not sure if we need, need to have a separate committee on that issue. Any questions on council committees?
Mr. Mayor, can we repeat these line by, line by line? Public Works, you want?
Public Works would be DeTrey, Martinez. Personnel is Roux and Martinez. And Real Estate, or we decided to change to Economic Development, will be Mendez and Martinez. And then the last, and then Code Enforcement... And then in Code Enforcement will be Rue and Mendez.
And then you'll need an alternate for SBCTA.
We're not quite there yet. We're just focusing on city council committees first.
Mr. Mayor, I, given the addition of our newest member and given both his prior work experience here, I think it would be appropriate to add Councilmember Mendez to either Public Works or Personnel.
Well, at this time, I think I'd like to recommend myself for Public Works and Councilmember Martinez on Personnel. We're both obviously involved in the city as far as council members. Councilmember Martinez, she has served as backup on Personnel in the past. And I think I have a lot of experience in dealing with Public Works myself, not on a practical standpoint, but on a policy standpoint.
So you want to add yourself to Public Works?
Yeah, and then Councilmember Mendez to serve on Economic Development and Code Enforcement. Okay, any objections to changing the name of Real Estate to Economic Development?
No.
Any objections to just removing the Goal Line, the Tri-City Goal Line? Okay, so ordered, not ordered yet. Okay, council liaisons, we have the Chamber of Commerce, that's an opening. And then we have the Planning Commission, PC Interview Panel. So one of the things I did is I just took the, we used to have the Planning Commission and Community Activities Commission, the one was called the Liaison, the other one was called the Interview Panel, I just combined the two, make it easier. So Chamber of Commerce, I don't know if there's an opening there, I don't know if.
Mayor, I'm already on the Chamber of Commerce, so I'd be very willing to do that.
Okay, so you can serve on the Chamber of Commerce then, Martinez will be the other member. And then the, obviously, the Interview Panel, the CAC is occupied. And there's an opening on the Planning Commission. I'd like to ask Councilmember Mendez to serve on that capacity since he also previously served on the Planning Commission. We're good there?
Yeah.
Okay, next one is interagency committees, obviously Goal Line, Omni-Trans, SBCTA, have openings and alternate, and then of course, there's the IOA Regional Sewage Policy Committee. I believe City Manager Starr, you plan on presenting us an item next month regarding Animal Control JPA, joining the Animal Control JPA?
Yes, that is correct.
Which, which Montclair will have a position on that board and one alternative on that board as well. Obviously, we can deal with those at that time. So just go through this, the Goal Line, obviously, Councilmember Rue and myself participating in these meetings, but they meet on the second Thursday of the month at 12:30. Omni-Trans meets on the first Wednesday of the month at 8:00 a.m. And SBCTA meets on the first Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. I know Councilmember Martinez, you told me that early meetings are not good for you because you have daycare or your son transportation school. So I was wondering if you'd like to serve on SBCTA? Since 10 o'clock seems like a better time for you.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that.
And then, I don't know, Councilmember Rue, you told me you may be able possibly do Omni-Trans?
Yes.
Okay, and then maybe Councilmember Mendez, since you'd like to do the Goal Line?
Is Goal Line?
It's going to be on a, it's the second Thursday at 12:30 is when they meet, but that's in Monrovia, just gave you an idea. I don't think Councilmember Rue misses that many meetings anyways. So if there is a meeting, maybe once, maybe one meeting a year you have to attend. So it's not going to be on a regular basis. Same thing with Omni-Trans and SBCTA, I have a pretty consistent record of attending those meetings. So, all right, so Goal Line again will be, alternate will be Councilmember Mendez. Omni-Trans will be Councilmember Rue. SBCTA will be Councilmember Martinez. Okay, so now we get down to the external organizations, City Selection Committee, the mayor's automatically a member. And if I can't make it, I'll just sign a letter and appoint somebody else to attend that meeting. I also serve as chairman of that, of that City Selection Committee for the Sandy County. The next one is League California Cities, Illinois Empire Division. I would like to serve as a member of that since I've been going to the division meetings and might get more involved in that division, if that's okay with you. And then Councilmember Rue, you still want to be the alternate?
Yes.
Okay.
I just need to know when those meetings are.
All right, the next one here is the League of California Cities Estate, and currently it's Rue and Martinez, you both, you're both okay?
I'm fine with that, Mr. Mayor.
Then we got the National League of Cities, it's Rue as a member. And I don't have an alternate right now, is there someone who wants to be an alternate to this? Once a year, takes place usually, it takes place in late November, I believe.
Yeah, it changes location, different states.
Yeah.
Yeah, nobody wants to.
Okay, then we'll put you on that. Then next one is the SCAG General Assembly, which is Dutre, myself and Rue. I believe you want to continue as alternate?
Yes.
Okay. And then the West Valley Mosquito, obviously, former Councilman Raft was appointed to that. And then let me see, the External Committees, okay, SBCTA Metro Valley, since Councilmember Martinez. I keep calling Councilmember, I apologize. At you too, okay, Mayor Potem Martinez, so you'll be alternated as well. And then Solid Waste Advisory, does this ever meet? Monica? Or Ed, Solid Waste Advisory? Well, it does exist, maybe Xavier, so who would like to serve on this? Xavier would like to serve on this? You know something about trash? Okay, then why don't you serve on this as well? So External Committees again will be Metro Valley, Study Session Dutre, Martinez. And then the Solid Waste Advisory will be Mendez. Okay, did I have it all?
I had one question.
Go ahead.
Going back up to the interagency committees, on the last one, IOA Regional Sewage Program Policy Committee, I know it's Dutre and Martinez, but if either one of you two are tired of being on that, I love sewage also, I love trash and sewage. So just, just a, what?
Okay, is anybody else, any objections to Mr. Mendez replacing Ms. Martinez? Okay, so IOA Regional Policy Committee will be Dutre and Mendez then. All right, anything else? No? We're all good, can I get a motion in?
I'll make a motion for the, as presented.
All right, get a second? Is there a second there?
Second.
Okay, then let's vote. Okay, it's four to one to vote on that. And just to let you know, some cities, one city I know, the mayor makes all, decides who gets what and puts it on the consent calendar, and that's how they vote on it. So at least here, we can have a discussion on it. Okay, so I have talked way too much. I want to now give this to the council members. How about Councilmember Rue? You're going to lead off and I'm going to allow Mayor Potem Martinez to chair the meeting as I step out for a second.
No, that's okay. First of all, there is an assembly bill I wanted to make everybody aware of, AB 413. It went into effect January 1st. It affects everyone who drives a vehicle in California. It says there will be no parking within 20 feet of an intersection or marked or an unmarked crosswalk on the vehicle approach side, that's 20 feet. On a two-way street, only the space on the right side approaching a crosswalk as a driver is affected. On a one-way street, both the left and the right, I'm trying to distill this down from a pretty lengthy piece. Left and right curb areas 20 feet from the crosswalk are no parking zones. The curb may or may not be painted red. Perhaps this is an issue for, you know, Public Works, but perhaps as we start to, you know, go through our streets, we may want to mark those areas in red so residents are aware of this. I don't know, too many people are aware of it.
Yeah, we are already addressing that. It actually was part of our systemic street safety analysis that was conducted about five years ago. And so we've already integrated it into going forward and making roadway improvements, including our Safe Route to School program. Curbing out those areas with red marking is an ongoing effort.
And I know those red curbs tend to fade out very quickly, but it's something that a lot of people, I know very few people are aware of this, so thank you. This is what we need to do. I've had a few residents ask me why the flags are at half staff and I have said it is for the death of President Jimmy Carter. Flag law, it was added to it in 1954 by President Eisenhower who said that there will be a 30-day period of mourning, flags will be lowered to half staff for the death of any president. So that's where we got that from. I want to note the passing of a very longtime Montclair resident. I think many of us up here knew Betty Di Giovanni. Her husband Sam was on the Ontario Montclair School Board for two, maybe three terms, very, very active in the city of Montclair. Sam passed away probably 10 years ago or so. And I know Betty was in good spirits for a while and started to decline. So certainly a longtime resident of Montclair. I want to note something that has a direct connection to Montclair, so follow me out on this. Recently, President Biden awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom. There were many different honorees. One of them has a connection to Montclair. He honored posthumously the civil rights activist Fannie Lou Hamer. If you don't know her, read her story, it's fascinating. She was beaten and wound up hospitalized for several months simply for advocating for her God-given equality. Fascinating story, she is the one who stood on national TV and said to the American people, "We're sick and tired of being sick and tired." And was a real catalyst in the civil rights era. What is the connection to Montclair? She is the aunt of Pastor Donald Rucker of Christian Development Center. So we have the, a blood relative of a Presidential Medal of Freedom recipient right here in Montclair. And I think that's pretty special, she was a very, very special lady. I do want to comment, the mayor commented on the fires. I have been volunteering in Pasadena on weekends, trying to help, whether it's giving out food, supplies, helping people find resources. I can't be there 10 and 12 hours as some people are, but I've spent some time there. People will tell you their stories and I become a little bit emotional when I hear this. I have friends who were burned out of the Palisades and friends burned out of Altadena. In fact, Pasadena Foothill Association of Realtors had 47 of their members where their home was burned to the ground, two of their staff members. So it's personal because I know some of these people. I recently heard a statement that was made that the fires are raging in California and not one token of defense was given. That is an insult to our firemen. They were out there on the front lines doing a lot. When you have 100 mile an hour winds, you can't control where that water goes. You can't control where that flame retardant goes. And these men and women are putting their lives on the line in these fires. We have people from San Bernardino County there, we have people from all over. Assembly Member Michelle Rodriguez has a son who is a firefighter, EMT, paramedic, and he's been helping with those fires. So that's not a nice thing to say about our firemen. They've been frontline, our policemen, our EMTs, our paramedics, our nurses. Many of our hospitals are taking people in with smoke inhalation and trauma. There's going to be a tremendous need for shelter. It's one of my favorite subjects, you've heard me talk about that. If anybody knows anywhere that some of these families can go, rent a place, maybe you have a small ADU, let me know because I'm working with some folks in LA County on that. If you have a home to go to, be thankful. I also want to thank somebody I've never met, I just know he's been helping. Chef Jose Andres, many of you know World Central Kitchen. He has been feeding many of the evacuees, many of those who have burned out of their home. He's had meals ready for firemen, policemen. His team has been wonderful. I've never met the man, but I've seen his team in action. And, oh, he was also a Presidential Medal of Freedom recipient. But this is, everybody's coming together. And I appreciate San Bernardino County sending out the press release that they're sending out help as well. It's a time like this, there are no county borders, there are no city borders. Just help where you can, whatever you can do, because these people are truly hurting. We've lost some wonderful masterpieces in Southern California. The Will Rogers Home, which had all of his manuscripts. It had Native American rugs, he was part Native American from Claremore, Oklahoma. I've been through that home many times and it is now in rubble. The Topanga Motel, built by William Randolph Hearst, burned to the ground. The Rand McNally Home, which was, you've seen it in movies, I've taken the tour, it's burned to the ground. The Zane Gray House in Altadena, which housed many of his Western memorabilia manuscripts, priceless pieces of art, burned to the ground. Not only to mention, so many people lost, their businesses, their homes, their places of worship. And wherever we can help, please help, I've gone on too long, thank.
Just a few follow-up items, I believe two of them, and then an announcement. Have the gates at Sunset Park been back up and fixed? Because I know the last, the first round of winds, they were all knocked down. They're back up now, are they secure though, so this next, well, did they survive last night? Because last night was a doozy. Okay, all right, so are we using like sandbags, beanbags to hold them down? By the way, thank you for being here tonight. I know you.
Yeah, I actually meant to drive through the site today, I didn't get a chance to, but I'm assuming it is secured. And with whatever means the contractor needs to do to make sure those fences are up again.
I appreciate that. And I only brought it up because a resident on Montclair Connects decided to make sure it was well known. So I saw it, I know mayor saw it, everyone else saw it, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, the winds are just, you know, yeah. The good thing is we did have some trees fall down, one of the PD, I believe, one at the Trent Center, so we had some minor trees that fell down, but they were taken care of.
Appreciate that, thank you. And again, thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate the replies from the city manager to my email regarding the, for me, frustrating truck issue or the, I'm going to just say it bluntly, the metaphorical metal finger that truckers are giving us on Mona Vista Avenue from the freeway all the way down to, as long as they want to go into, maybe even to Chino. I know that I brought this up initially at the November 18th meeting. I have seen and skimmed, I haven't read every word yet of the reply from the city manager. But I would like there to be a report from the Christmas timeframe to now on Mona Vista as to the efforts that the chief had stated to me and others of extra patrols ticketing regarding the beefed up presence to try to combat the diesels and heavy-duty, high-profile vehicles violating the truck route on Mona Vista. Because it is getting worse, so I would like it addressed. I would like some statistics, I would like to see how many tickets were issued from a 30-day period, 45-day period. Because I have residents hounding my butt about it and I know that staff has met with some residents. They've responded to concerns, but ultimately, my neck's on the line. And when I can't get information, it looks like the city's stonewalling and it's not a good perception for residents to have of us. So I would respectfully request that, either at the next meeting, a report or at least give me the stats and I can share it with the residents and question that are concerned. But again, colleagues, I do think we need to look at that issue on Mona Vista. I don't think the signage is working. I'd like for it to be discussed. I would like to go into it further, but I'll respect the Brown Act rules. But I have a great deal of sense of frustration. And I'm not knocking you at all, chief, because I know you've done, you've done what you could. And of course, people, they'll drive on it. And again, that's why I started my comments with them giving us the finger, basically, because I witnessed it today. I have family. because I witnessed it today. I have family here that witnessed it today. I mean, we were behind a diesel off the 10. We're going southbound Mona Vista, they're coming off the 10 freeway, and they're going south on, from Palaverdy down, and we're riding behind a massive diesel, and they see the sign you put out there. And do you think they make a left on San Bernardino to go to Central? Nope. They just kept hauling butt going down, and it's frustrating.
If I may comment briefly, I did provide the number of citations that we had written in that period of time prior to our beefed-up efforts, which we have been utilizing, our officers who are trained specifically in some of the commercial enforcement to conduct enforcement there. I did provide the number of citations that we had written. I don't have that number handy with me, but it will be, I would like to provide a post-effort or at least, you know, an update on that number of citations that we have issued, or at least contacts we've made since then. We've placed the mobile signs out there, the mobile boards. It is my, in my experience, I believe anyone who drives one of those vehicles knows quite well the rules, and they know when they're violating it. You know, there could be a car or two that is over 10,000 pounds because it's loaded a certain way, if it's a RV or motorhome, that the drivers with a Class C license may not understand that. They may be educated on it, but yes, the commercial violators, usually the commercial vehicles, whether it be the 18-wheelers or the big large box vans, the ones that fall in those classes. We are working those, and I can provide an update on the number of citations issued.
Very much so, please.
And I do understand that, you know, we can't stop every single one. We can't, we can't get every truck. You know, there's, there might be one going down there right now, but we do have, we do have, have extended our efforts to work that area. In fact, it might even prompt a special, a special assignment or two for, a special detail, I should say, for officers to go out there specifically to combat that issue.
And it's, and it's not just the same residents that I brought up in my email. I mean, there's some now further going down to on Mona Vista by Orchard and Kingsley that are now on me because they see it too. So I'm thinking, okay, there's, instead of there being two or three, we're now getting like five or six residents saying, hey.
Can I, can I make a comment about the residents? Because there's five of us. I know you're contacting you, but the rest of us need to hear this too. Need to see the names of residents, and they come to meeting here, they could send us an email, they could call us. But I just need to, you know, when we say residents, you know, it's just, you know, just, you know, it just can't be one councilmember. The rest of us got to see who these people are, so same with staff. So, I, the question I have is, and I can't talk about, it's not on the, it's not on the agenda, but Chief, I think, can you provide that information, what the citations have been issued so far? What so far PD has done since, I don't know, how far back we want to go?
Yes, I'll look at what I provided initially. Now, there is a little bit of a delay for reporting the data from the time the officer turns in the citation till the time it gets processed, so I can find out that delay. So it's not instantaneous, so to speak, so I can't tell you how many we wrote in the last two days. It would have to be, it had to be, you know, there's a little bit of a delay to gather that information.
Yeah.
When I say a little bit of a delay, we're probably talking about a week, you know, from the time the citation.
That's fine. It just, if, I don't know, go back to July of '24?
Okay.
Is that good, Ben? '24, or you want to go further back?
Sure. I mean, I didn't get those complaints at that timeframe of that year. I got them right around October of last year.
There should be dates on this too, right? We'll get a date, when was the issue?
Sure, I'll present, I'll provide a report that'll outline the efforts.
Yeah, kinda like the...
You know, especially, especially in the last month or so when we've really been addressing that issue and directing some patrol to work that issue.
Then you can notice the difference. Okay, that works.
Yes, because I do notice it as well, and the officers are noticing it well, and it's something that's catching on for the beat unit, but it might need a little more attention with a special detail that we put out, or special detail two or three where we have an officer or two that specifically worked that corridor. And other truck routes and other truck violations in the city as well, Brook Street, the parking issues that, you know, seems no matter how much we enforce it, soon as we move on to something else, the trucks will park right back there. So it might be a combined effort. And not only that, a campaign on social media and to get the message out there that, you know, the truckers, that the truckers that drive these vehicles, they know they're not supposed to be on that route. They are trained during the driving test to look at the signage. We have the signage that's appropriate out there. That doesn't mean that they're just thinking, well, I'll just get away with it. I'll just chance it, you know, and we want to make that, them chancing it less fruitful for them with the citation.
What is the anomaly citation for that?
Well, I'd have to, I'd have to check with the court. That's not something the city, the city determines that's a vehicle code violation. And sometimes those vary depending on the weight on certain vehicles, the amount of pound, the amount of weight that you're over. But I can make an inquiry to the court. In fact, I'll do that for the basic unladen vehicle that's 10,000 pounds or more. You know, without us doing an actual weight of the vehicle, what's the ticket for this section? I can provide that. In fact, we might even be able to put it on some of the signage.
Perfect.
You know, so like, just like the carpool violation usually has a dollar amount on the freeway, we can try to find that, that amount as well. But that's not something the city determines that, that's scheduled set by the, at the courthouse level.
No, I appreciate that, and I appreciate all your efforts. Like we said, we've had conversations about this in chambers and whatnot, so thank you for that.
Yes, thank you.
I appreciate it. I look forward to the information coming.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so you get us the entire council to report of the stops that the police has done out there, going back to July, and then what are their actions, the boards, and what else you think you'd be appropriate to do.
Okay.
In that report. Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
And I can't, no, I'm, I'm, I'm done, yeah, thank you. I can't control what council members' residents call. So I'm not gonna report as to, Resident John Doe called me, here's the four other additional numbers, call them too. If they trust me to get information, then I'll let them do it. I've asked several of them. They've contacted other council members or city staff. Some say yes, some say no. And that's fine. I have revealed information in emails, as you've seen, to the city manager, and it's gotten back to you, and that's fine. I think the system's working. Tomorrow, folks, one of the newest businesses to the city of Montclair, and the first one in the state of California, is my understanding. Main Event, as you know, which is underneath the AMC Theaters at the Montclair Plaza or Montclair Place. It'll always be Plaza to me. Tomorrow, January 22nd, at 10:30 a.m., there will be a ribbon cutting. And Main Event, folks, is a, in conjunction with Dave and Buster's, an entertainment facility. They will have, I believe, 20 or 25 bowling lanes. They have indoor laser tag, or a paintball type thing where the ink that hits you dissolves. There's virtual reality games, there's wall-sized TV screens, meeting rooms. They're having their grand opening tomorrow, and it's my understanding that the first 200 people in line will get a, some type of prize or a pass for one year free of some type of game there. So please feel free to come. It'll be a fun event. I would hope to see a lot of Montclair residents there, and maybe even some out-of-towners. But this is a big draw for the location, freeway access. Hopefully, we can, and I'll say it unashamedly, hopefully we can take away some of the Dave and Buster's business from Ontario and bring it into Montclair and have all these activities here. But hopefully, I will get a chance to see many of you there. Don't forget, 10:30 a.m., Main Event, ribbon cutting, right underneath AMC Theaters. Love to have you there. Plenty of parking, obviously. And then just two little personal quips. I wanted to thank Jonathan Chavez for sticking out the meeting and being here all night, and I appreciate it, one of our residents. I did see your message on Montclair Connects, and hopefully you get a lot of likes. But thank you for being a trooper and sticking it out and keeping tabs on the city and also up here on the council. And just one final note. Xavier, I hope you liked your first official, your first full meeting. And it's kind of odd for me not to be the first name called during roll anymore. I almost said "I" and answered for you, but looking forward to serving with you as I shared a month ago. But that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Mendez, it's all yours.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Ben, for that. I'll keep mine very short. Just first off, just want to, again, thank the city of Montclair residents for voting for me to represent them in the city of Montclair. Two, I want to thank the Montclair Planning Commission for supporting me through this transition. I do appreciate that, you guys. And then, one last thing, earlier when we were doing the police officers, it was nice to see everybody, all the new ones. But just wondering, possibly if we could go back to, I remember we used to introduce other full-time employees in different departments. It would be nice to see that again happen, unless there's just so many that it would take forever. But if not, it would be neat to see like what other new employees are coming into the city of Montclair, not just police and fire. And other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
And I would encourage you, again, department heads, if you have new employees, don't be shy to bring them over here. Don't let PD and fire have all the bright, huh? Brightness there. Mayor Potem Martinez.
Thank you. Just want to say it's a tough time for a lot of people, you know, especially for our police officers and firefighters and for the people that have been displaced recently. But I just want to give a kudos to our community members and our residents who have been doing what they can to raise, to donate, to raise money, to donate backpacks. And I've seen a lot of community members come together and contribute, and it's been really nice to see that. We have so many people here in our city that really care. Thank you.
Thank you, and we have committee minutes, and we are adjourned. Thank you.